Good evening. Thank you, everyone who's come to attend our regular city council meeting for February 7th and those who are joining us online. I'd like to go ahead and call this meeting to order and have our roll call, please.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed? Absent. Councilmember Schmisher?
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Stein?
Here.
Councilmember Tracy?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Here.
Mayor Smith?
Here. I'd also like to invite Joanna Bender from Mercy Over Bondage to give our invocation. Let's all please rise.
Father God, we just thank you so much for this time and for this meeting. Lord, we thank you for your goodness that you're bringing to Canyon City. We thank you that your hand of favor is upon us. And I pray over every heart and every family represented here, Lord God, in this room. Lord, we just pray, I just pray a blessing over us and your scripture that says, "Give your burdens to the Lord, and he will take care of you. He will not permit the godly to slip and fall." Lord, may our words and decisions tonight in this room be honoring to you. Would you bless this meeting in Jesus' name? Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We do dedicate the first few minutes of city council meeting. If you have something you wish to address to city council that's not on the agenda, now is the time that you are free to do so if you wish. Seeing none, we'll move on to council member announcements. Councilmember Tracy?
Thanks. Just wanted to mention that the next community advisory group meeting for the Cotter uranium site, the Superfund site, is Tuesday, February 15th at 6:00. And it's all online on Zoom and also on Facebook Live. If you want more information, I can send that to council members and put it up somewhere. I am also working, since I'm going to kind of be a liaison between the community advisory group and the city, the council. I'm working on, what I'm working to be sure is a fairly short summary of not just the history of the site, but where we are in the regulatory process. So just wanted to mention that.
Thank you, Councilmember Tracy. And I was just, for your benefit and the other council members too, if you do have like an announcement or an invitation to a community-oriented event or meeting that would benefit our members at large, you can forward those to our PIO officer, Kristy Gotham, and she can consider those and post them on the city's Facebook page to share it on social media. Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We do have a general government meeting Wednesday at 5:00 PM here. We're going to be getting an update from the Department of Wildlife here in Colorado and the Humane Society. And we also have tomorrow a 150th sesquicentennial meeting, where we're busy still planning for the events coming up.
Yes, we are. I'm so thankful for all those busy planners, too. Councilmember Smith?
Just once again, Canyon City Youth Tiger Baseball is doing their annual fundraiser at Doritos on February 20th. It's the Sunday after the Super Bowl, and everybody should be pretty bored. So come on out, 10 bucks to get in the door and support your Canyon City youth baseball.
I love your sounds pitch. That's awesome. I would like to give a couple of commendations, I guess. And one is to recognize our city clerk, Cindy Foster Owens down here, who was recently designated a certified municipal clerk that was awarded by the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. So congratulations on that. I'd also like to give a real hearty gratitude and thanks to Brandon Mayers and Lisa Stutz at the Royal Gorge Museum. They're the ones that are responsible for designing, ordering, and overseeing the installation, as well as the Parks Department. Rex is right here. And our facilities department for putting up all of the banners and the window cleans and things that are going up all over Canyon City for the 150th anniversary. And I'm just really grateful for them and their hard work for making Canyon City look extra special this year for our anniversary. It's now time to review our consent agenda. Ryan Stevens?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Consent item 7A is to approve the minutes for January 18th regular city council meeting and the January 19th Vision Committee meeting. 7B authorizes the mayor to appoint Mildred Wintz to serve on the Historic Preservation Committee. 7C authorizes the city administrator to sign a funding agreement with the Golden Age Center. 7D authorizes the mayor to sign a cooperative agreement for management of the Gold Belt Tour National Scenic Byway. 7E authorizes the city administrator to sign an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Florence concerning the use of the city Florence Shooting Range. 7F ratifies the city administrator's signature on an emergency mutual disaster aid intergovernmental agreement with the Colorado Department of Corrections. 7G authorizes the Ara Vapa Running and Ride Ultra Running and Mountain Bike Event on April 9th and 10th. 7H awards bid 1522 sodium silif- fluoride to Hark Cross Chemicals and an amount not to exceed $7,800. 7I awards bid 1722 pond cleaning to M&amp;B Pond and Lagoon and then amount not to exceed $51,000. 7J awards bid 1822 NELCO 8102+ to NELCO Company and an amount not to exceed $25,000. 7K awards bid 2022 fuel dispensers and submersible pumps to Kubat Equipment and Service Company and an amount not to exceed $36,194. 7L is the monthly budget summary and 7M is the cash disbursements. And staff would ask that items F and G be moved to the regular agenda for discussion.
Any questions or discussion by council? Councilmember Schmisher?
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. I believe that we have the executive director of the Golden Age Center in the audience, and I was wondering if he might want to come up and just say a few words about their performance over the last year.
Absolutely. Come on up. Please introduce yourself.
My name is Daniel Clements. I'm with the, I'm the director of the Golden Age Center. I was a little unprepared. I apologize. I did send Mr. Stevens a better recap of our numbers as far as our building usage and our transit usage for the last year. Right off the top of my head, I do know that we were just about 10,000 in ridership for Fremont County Transit, the public transportation here in Fremont County. 2,000 of those was ADA compliant with his wheelchairs. I do believe the other 60% was 60 and over for our elderly. And the other 20 was just Fremont County Transit, anybody 18 and above. Our, we have recently opened up September 8th for our nutrition system again, and that usually between 40 to 60 people a day, five days a week. Use our facility for that. Golden, sorry, Silver Sneakers and Coffee Club and just all kinds of other activities as far as dances, crafts. We have pool tables and just events that we're trying to start back up again after COVID because we've shut down for quite a while. So as it sits right now, that's pretty much where our numbers are for our facility usage. I do believe they're going to grow this next year. I wouldn't, I can't really say how much, but quite a bit, I would hope. As far as the funding goes today, I don't know if I can speak on that. We do have HVAC unit that has a balance due of 12.5 that we'd like a little bit of help with that and just the regular general operations is what we're after, maintenance on vehicles and things of that nature.
Any questions for Daniel while he's here?
I'd just like to thank you for the important work that the Golden Age Center does, both for the folks who are a little bit older in our community, but also just bearing in mind what limited public transportation options we have here. Just thank you for the work that your organization does. Sorry, and thank you for being here tonight to share a little bit about it.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you. We appreciate you being here.
Bye. Everybody have a good night.
I'm done.
Yeah, unless you want to wait for the vote.
I'll get the vote.
That's the one that really counts. Any other questions or comments by council? If not, I would recommend or I would like to request a motion to approve the consent agenda and agenda, but moving items F and G to the regular agenda. Councilmember Smith?
Madam Mayor and council, I move to approve the consent agenda, moving topics F and G to discussion, correct?
Second. There's been a motion and a second to any discussion. I'll call a vote.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Stein?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracy?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Aye.
Thank you, council. All right, city administrator, can you please give us a report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There is a quite extensive administrator report in your packets. One thing that is not in your packet that you have sitting at your dais and will make a part of the public record is a letter from Black Hills regarding their proposals. This was presented to the Energy Committee. And the recommendation of the Energy Committee at this point is to basically sit with this proposal until we receive further information from the other two organizations that are currently doing due diligence and then evaluate all of those proposals at the same time. So this is just a recognition to council that this letter has been received and we're continuing to evaluate the different options as we proceed forward. The core, you know, due diligence period ended last week. We've reached out to them to see where they're at with their, with any additional proposal or request for time. And then the Guzman proposal, their due diligence period will end at the beginning of March.
Thank you, Ryan.
And I'm happy to take any questions about the written report.
Councilmember Tracy?
I wonder, Administrator Stevens, under the Water Department, if you could just expand a little bit on a couple of bullet items. The Reynolds map redline, 2021 2A project Reynolds map redlined, and then the bullet item about four-mile projects redlined up, redlining updated drawings. If you could just say a little bit more about those.
Those are projects that are going through the development process right now. And, you know, as they go through the development process, our departments take a look at, at those plans and they'll redline them for additional comments or concerns about specific pieces that there might be some concern with or if they just need additional information.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Thanks so much, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to commend the city with regard to following through and making sure that the development assistance packets are updated in line with the new UDC. I know that a lot of work went into the new UDC last, last year. And I know that in order for us to really reach that goal of being business friendly, we need to make sure that it is accessible and easy to use. And I'm confident that the staff's work on those development assistance packets will really go a long way. So I'm glad to hear that those will be done by the end of the month.
Yeah, those will be done at the end of the month, and you'll probably start seeing the first one hopefully by the end of this week.
Great. And then I just had one follow-up question with regard to the Black Hills Energy Letter. I just wanted to make sure that they are, I only had an opportunity to skim it while we were sitting up here. They are not asking for time to create a proposal. Like this is their proposal, so we would be evaluating essentially apples to apples.
Correct. This is their proposal.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Tracy?
Thanks. On the, I had one other item on the written administrator report on the third page, about three-fourths of the way down, subdivision exemption, four-mile ranch planning area, 45-acre parcel being planted as a single parcel for property sale. Wondered if there is, are there any pros and cons to that or any future impact by that being handled that way?
No, I think, you know, with a PDD that size, you know, you certainly have to parcel it out over time. The development is in gut, in alignment with the planned development district that they have out there. But I think over time that that's the only way you're going to be able to parcel those out over time. Patrick, any comments that you'd like to add to that?
So the, at the moment, we have two subdivision applications for the same area within Four Mile Ranch. The first one will create one large 45-acre parcel, and that is primarily so that they can transfer title of the ground. The second one is going to actually plat it into a series of commercial lots and include a new road that will provide access internally to those lots because that's processed as a preliminary plan, sketch preliminary plan that will be going to public hearing before Planning Commission later this month, and then council will see that application next month.
And so the one, the first one you mentioned is, is it this one here?
The subdivision exemption.
And so then if there's a change in ownership or whatever, then there would still be more come to the city in the future regarding the plans for that?
Of course, of course.
Thanks.
Any more questions? All right. Thank you, Ryan. Thank you, city council. We'll now move to item F that was on the consent agenda. This is concerning the Canyon City Police Department and the Colorado Department of Corrections. MOU, Ryan?
Yeah, and we've requested to move this to the consent agenda at the request of Councilmember Schmisher, who has a conflict and cannot vote on it separately. So, you know, we still, you know, asking, you know, staff recommends approval. This is to ratify the document. I have already signed it. And it'd be up to you to make a motion and take a vote.
Thank you. Councilmember Schmisher?
Thanks so much, Madam Mayor. Just for clarity's sake, I'm affiliated with a federal-state partnership with which this party, which, one of those is a party to this agreement. So therefore, I'm abstaining because I want to avoid any possible public perception of a conflict of interest. Thanks.
Thank you for your transparency. Councilmember Tracy?
Ready for a motion?
Sure.
I move to that the city council ratify the city administrator's signature on the emergency mutual slash disaster aid intergovernmental agreement with the Colorado Department of Corrections.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second to any discussion. Call a vote.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Abstain.
Councilmember B. Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Stein?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracy?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Aye.
All right, that motion passes. Thank you. We are now moving on to item G, and this is concerning the Morgan Weinberg of Ara Vapia Running and Rides, seeking approval for an ultra-running and mountain biking event on April 9th and 10th of 2022. Ryan?
So we have a proposal for, for this event, and Rex Brady, our Parks Director, is here to introduce it.
This is Morgan Weinberg. She's here. And she's going to present her proposal, counsel, her consideration. And we'll just introduce Morgan, and she'll tell you about her then.
Wonderful. Thank you for being here, Ms. Weinberg.
Awesome. Hi. Yes, thank you guys for having me. Really excited about this event. I just wanted to start by telling you guys a little bit about Ara Vapa Running and Rides first. And so we are based down in Phoenix. We just recently expanded up to Colorado. But we've been around since about 2009 and host over 40 ultra-running, trail-running, and mountain biking events down there. We also have a standing event in Silverton, Colorado, which brings in about 700 runners to the area every year. We've had that since about 2011. So we're really versed in the trail and mountain biking world, and we're really excited to bring some additional opportunities up here to Colorado. I've been a Colorado resident for about nine years now, and the trails in Canyon City have always drawn me in. So when I was able to start developing some new courses and opportunities for people to get out and recreate through some of our events, Royal Gorge was a clear choice for me of somewhere that I wanted to put a new race. And so I know there are a few other events there, but I do feel like we can offer something different for our ultra-runners. We're looking at a looped course. So what that will do, it'll be a 20K loop, which is about 12 miles, and runners and riders will have the opportunity to do multiple loops, one, two, or three. And so that gives them kind of a safe space to be able to test themselves on distances that maybe they haven't been able to do before in a very safe contained way where they're going to get aid along the way and have a main central station to keep coming around through. Usually for events like this, especially in a city like Canyon City, we'll see about 70 to 80% people come from out of town. And so we've partnered with Canyon City Bikes and Brews to do our packet pickup with them. And we're also looking at local hotel options to do a lodging night for people who might stay throughout the whole weekend. We also want to offer camping at the East Ridge Campground at Royal Gorge and through that, ask for donations that would go directly back to the park and to the campground. So we're really looking to bring some more people into Canyon City. I love the vibe here. I like what it has to offer. And I think it's a really good location to get people to come in from cities all around.
Well, we certainly appreciate you wanting to host an event here at our trails in Canyon City. I mean, that was our ultimate goal, so we're really glad to start seeing that come to fruition. I think we do have some questions probably from city council. We'll start with Councilmember Schmisher.
Thanks so much, Madam Mayor. And similarly, very excited to see people excited about our trails and wanting to bring in folks who don't live here to experience and enjoy them. So thanks for the work that you do in outdoor recreation. I do have quite a few questions about your proposal, but I think most of them are pretty straightforward. And then I also have a number of questions for our Parks Director about it as well. I was wondering, you know, I love the fact that you've mentioned that you're committed to giving back and using, using your community to take action to preserve the trails. I was wondering, how do you actually envision trail workdays happening here? Would that be with your company's employees? Or kind of how, how do you envision striving to make a positive impact on the local area?
Yeah, thank you for the question. I think what's cool is we're based in Colorado Springs, so we're only about an hour away. And right now, we're working on getting some of our event crew trained through Rocky Mountain Field Institute, so they can be event crew leads on some of the projects that they're doing, but also have our staff be knowledgeable to be able to lead trail workdays. So that's really one of my main goals is obviously I do want to put events on, but I want to make sure that whatever trails we're using, we're either repairing or making better and increasing the connectivity between. So we would definitely use our staff, and we also have a pretty good reach with our volunteers who obviously care about the trails. So we'd work with the local groups here, FAR, the city, and figure out what kind of trail work needed to get done and then even come, come down and do it.
Awesome. That's really great to hear that you're, you're really committed to, to giving back and to improving the trails that you're using as well. I also just wanted to flag that there were a few things in your written proposal that I think are, may not quite work well for the city, like park overflow parking along 3A and donations for the campground. We actually have a paid campground. So I think there may be some little things like that that will need to be worked out for this to, to move forward into the contract phase. I did also just want to ask, and then also potable water. We don't have potable water up there, so it's non-potable. And then I did also just want to ask, in one spot, you mentioned that it would be, any damage that occurred would be fixed within two weeks, but then later it says a month, and I wasn't sure kind of what you were thinking about with that.
I would say a month would be a safe timeframe for us to be able to get back down and, and activate our group to, to make repairs on the trail.
Okay, thank you. That's really helpful. I think all of my other questions are for Rex, so I will, I will hold.
Well, why don't we just keep both of you, why don't you go ahead and stay at Morgan so that you can pipe in at any time that's appropriate? Go ahead and ask Rex your questions.
Awesome. So one of my, I guess, biggest more philosophical questions is the Royal Gorge is a really important space for people who live in Canyon City to go up and enjoy. And I know already on the weekend, it can be really tough to find parking at the Maidenhead Shade Twisted Sister and Trailhead. It can be difficult for local people to really enjoy the gorge. Have we kind of given any strategic thought to how many of these non-local for-profit events we want to have each year?
There it is. Actually, we're really relatively new to the trail industry here in Canyon. This, the Royal Gorge is kind of our first trail system that we've, we've installed. But one of the fears that I had the entire process of developing all these trails in, in the Royal Gorge is overuse and loving these trails to death. So I've talked to Ryan about this a little bit and Kim as well. I think we should limit the amount of outside events coming into the Royal Gorge Park and, and try to preserve that, you know, for, we, we absolutely want to have people come here and experience these trails. But at the same time, I don't want to, like I said, love them to death. So I think it's, at least initially, it's very important for us to, to really think about that aspect and overuse. That's the main thing that I want to avoid. But I think if we were to initially limit it to two events per year from event organizers like yourself, Morgan, and then one event with a local group such as FAR or, or others, that, that would be a good starting point for us. And then we can kind of make determinations from there if we would want to allow more events on our trails or... And since we're, we're kind of new, this is just going to be kind of a trial by fire. And, but that's what I would like to do initially is, is limit the impact on outside companies coming in. But at, in the same breath, we, that's what we want. That's what we built those trails for. But it has to be sustainable and it has to be with respect to the environment.
Thank you so much for that, and that's really heartening to hear. I mean, it's also, it's wonderful to hear that 60 to 70%, I think you said, or 70 to 80% are from out of town, and hopefully that's a positive benefit for some of our local businesses as well. But I think being really strategic about how often and sequencing and spacing. I mean, obviously, in early April, we could still have snowpack up there.
Yeah, and that's, you know, that's, that's a concern of mine. One of my biggest concerns is, you know, trail damage occurs when, when the trail is wet and muddy or snowy. But, you know, normal use and even use from events such as this don't damage a trail that's, that's ready for it. That's, you know, dry and, and ready to go. But, yeah, and that's why I put a caveat in our contract that the city has the right to postpone an event due to bad weather. Morgan, I think you would agree. You wouldn't want to run a race on a muddy course or a snowy course. So, I mean, it's just, you lose all your damage deposit repairing it. But I think it's great that they want to actually come here and, and put, you know, some work into these trails. And to me, that's, that's a really positive aspect of this, of this proposal in particular.
Absolutely. And I'm, I'm really heartened to hear that the updated kind of standard contract would include it being the city's decision as to whether or not the trail condition's allowed.
And just to clarify a little bit, you mentioned parking on 3A. There will be no parking on 3A. 3A is the paved road that goes to the Royal Gorge Bridge. Any overflow parking would be on County Road F-30.
Sure. It's just in, in Ara Vapa's written proposal, it mentions both F-30 and 3A.
Yeah, we wouldn't, we wouldn't allow, and that would be in the contract, so.
That's good to hear.
And this is a standardized contract that we've used in the past, and we can obviously modify these for that type of event, so.
And I think my understanding, please correct me if I'm wrong, is even if we voted to authorize this this evening, the, the contract itself would come back before city council, before it was actually an approved event?
Yes.
Okay. So I just have two more quick questions. One, have we taken into account kind of big horn, big horn sheep, lambing other wildlife that's up there and, and any potential impacts that this kind of large-scale event may have on them?
Yeah, this particular event is, will not take place on, on the new Royal Cascade Trail. That's the area on the BLM where the seasonal closure is. So this will avoid that. It'll come close to that area on city property. But, you know, we've had events in the past and it's never been an issue. And so I don't, I don't see that being an issue for this particular event with our local wildlife.
Okay. And then the last question was just the amount of the security deposit. At, I mean, I think with this particular event, it may be a little bit different because it sounds like they will actually be coming to personally fix any potential trail damage. But I guess I'm a little bit concerned that $2,500 does not go very far when it comes to fixing potential trail damages. I'm wondering where that amount came from.
That is true, and, you know, that's just a number that we plugged in. And, you know, that's just a number that we plugged in there. That is up for negotiation as well if we see a, a reason to, to boost that damage deposit. And you, you have to understand, I think, Morgan, you can elaborate on this a little more. These companies that come in and do these events, they're, they're professionals and they know what they're doing. And their, their emphasis is on protecting the trail and maintaining the trail. And they're, they're not here to run through it and make a whole great big mess and then leave town. So, because they would never be asked back. But again, getting back to the, you know, trying to limit these events, I think the, the trail system in the Royal Gorge and especially the, the Royal Cascade, it's, it's really incredible. And we have, we have Steve Thomas here tonight, our trail builder. He's back behind us. He's done all the, the work up there. But I would like to see limited events, but the events would be exclusive. There's nowhere else in the state of Colorado that you can experience this Royal Cascade Trail. It's one of the best. And like I said, my, my main concern is overuse and loving this thing to death. We want to do it responsibly and we want to bring as many people as we can here, but at the same time, do it responsibly.
Absolutely. Just a couple of, of comments in response to that. One, I think you could definitely tell from Ara Vapa's proposal that they really do love and care about the trails. So thank you for, for the obvious care that went into that. Second, I think March 5th is still the, the opening of the Royal Cascade? Is that right? So huge kudos to, to Steve and to the entire Parks Department for all of the hard work and, and love that went into, to creating that particular trail. And then I guess-
We would be remiss if we didn't mention FAR.
Oh, of course, and FAR. And I know that they wanted to be here tonight as well, but their board meeting is, is from five to seven, otherwise they would be here too. And then, but I guess lastly, I know we already have via, Zia, sorry, Zia in May. And then we had another entity, Revenant Running, come that's interested in that area as well. So I know that this would actually be a third outside event. And I know you had just mentioned two. I know Revenant needs to come back to us for, for permission again, but I'm just wondering about your thoughts on that.
The Revenant Run was approved last year, but then it was canceled due to COVID. But I guess what I was trying to say is we could probably have more than two events within the Royal Gorge Park itself excluding the Royal Cascade. The Royal Cascade is the trail that I would prefer to have just two events on.
I appreciate that clarification.
Yeah, just because-
I don't want to be too exclusive because it kind of negates the purpose of building those trails. Especially if we have professionals who know what they're doing that are coming to remediate the use that they're putting on the trails.
Right. I, I think there's a little bit of concern of having this event in April and then the Zia event in May. We've never had events that close together. I don't know, Morgan, if you would be willing to maybe do that event later in the year, in the, the summer or another month?
Yeah, I would say the running event is definitely our top priority. If the rides event can't work out this year, we could look at doing that at another time or maybe just hold off on that one for now. But the running is definitely our number one priority to get going this year.
Imagine if you're running 100 miles or whatever. I mean, you're, I mean, these are really long distances. You want to have some cooler weather on your side.
Yeah, I think it, there's not a lot of spring options in Colorado for ultras of that distance. And so that's why I think Canyon City is really unique with that. I mean, definitely weather is still, it could go either way. It's Colorado, but I feel like out of any place in Colorado, it's safer here than anywhere else. So a lot of people will be looking to do like a safe ultra option in April.
And it's a nice way to prep for their bigger races in the summer, too.
Yeah.
Yeah. You would be willing to, at this point, drop the bicycle race, the mountain bike race, and just do the running?
I would be if that was necessary. I will say that their event is a fixed time event, so it's six hours, 12 hours. Ours is fixed by mileage. The loops are similar, though theirs is closer to 10 and ours is 12, so we add a little bit on. So it is a little different, but I understand it would be added bike traffic in the park kind of close to, to the event. So if it was necessary, I would be okay to drop it. Not my preference, but I would do it.
Would that be drop it per weather?
I think, so with, with-
I want to keep that option open. Yeah.
If we're willing to get approval for both, I would definitely prefer that. If it was kind of one or the other, I would go for the runs. I think with trail conditions, it is easier to do a run when your trails are snowy. Like for instance, if the trails were snow packed, I would be comfortable putting a race on for runners on snow packed trails if the city was. For rides, I wouldn't do it. So I would call that event and either postpone or cancel altogether.
So it's actually, you know, a month between events or a little over a month. But, and like I say, this is kind of new for, for us as well. And we've had a couple of, of events up there. They've been very successful and there was, you know, the, the weather was cooperative and there was very little, very little damage done to the trail system, if any. So obviously-
Sorry, I was saying, we do have some people who'd like to, to make comments and that'd be Ryan Stevens.
First, first thing I was going to say is I was going to reiterate, Sir, Amy actually, or Councilwoman Schmisher, actually covered it regarding the contract. So the contract will come back before council at a later date. We just want to have direction so we put the right things into the contract tonight. Regarding the, the rides and the proximity of, of one ride to the other being a month apart, you know, one of the things that we talk about from a tourism standpoint is building up the shoulder seasons. And having, having these activities in April and May actually helps with building up that shoulder season for tourism and for economic development, downtown development. All of those things are very important as we look forward to what these trails can do for the community.
Thank you. Councilmember Tracy?
I just had a question. Excuse me, the maps included in our packet, I, I just am not clear looking at the 20K and 10K maps. If there, if those routes go along any county roads at any point or are they completely off of the roads or how the, I can't see where the roads are on the map. So I don't know if we have anything to-
They're mostly all on trail.
They're all on trail. There are a few crossings, but there's no on-road time.
Okay.
I would just like to reiterate to this, I'm probably a former runner before being on an elected, in an elected office, which has taken away almost all of my free time and being able to do races like Ragnar and such. That they are exciting, they're fun, they have great energy, it's a perfect vibe for our community. And it is a huge draw for revenue to our community for our restaurants and our hotels and our downtown businesses. So I don't want to let, think too small when we have a discussion on how many races that we do per year. And I think that that needs to be, as far as that subject goes, we need to have that subject probably discussed with the council, the Parks Department, FAR, and our community members as too. That, that needs to be a separate, bigger conversation that we have. Councilmember Schmisher?
I would completely agree because I, I absolutely agree. Hopefully it is bringing a lot of revenue and traffic to our downtown businesses. But I know we also don't want the Royal Gorge trails to be so congested by all of these events that can, the people of Canyon City are unable to, to use them and appreciate them. So I absolutely agree. I think that we need to have a larger strategic discussion about how many and how often is appropriate so that they aren't loved to death, whether it's the Royal Cascade or the, the trails up at the gorge. But also completely agree with Administrator Stevens about the, the shoulder season, season in particular. So I hope that the weather is good.
And we can add that discussion to a future general government revision committee meeting.
Sounds great.
And we're not just talking about the months of April and May. You know, there's, there's September and October, November, a lot of times we can be running in November.
November is actually usually-
You can be running in January.
Sometimes the best month, yeah.
It, it's wide open, but-
If there's no further discussion, I would like to entertain a motion. Do we, do we need a motion for this to move into a contract? Or is it just basically a discussion?
Yeah, I, I, we're just looking for a thumbs up and we'll put together a contract and bring that back to council.
The, I just have one, one further question then. The, the routes do appear to cross a county road and what, what will you do at, at those crossings?
Yeah, so we usually utilize volunteers as course marshals just to make sure that everyone's crossing safely. For our races, we always yield to traffic. So if there were cars coming, they get to go first and then our runners or riders can, can wait and then go.
Does, does, those are county roads or, so CDOT doesn't come into play, is that correct?
That, that is correct. They're county roads only.
Thank you.
I do have another question and Rex too. If they were to rent the entire campground, would our facilities be adequate for their use? Like I noticed that they have, so that there'll be some portable restrooms at select aid stations. I'm wondering if there should be more portable restrooms at the campground itself.
Yeah, there will be. That'll be in the contract. There, there has to be additional facilities for an event like this.
And if they do rent the whole campground, could they have a little bit of a higher density than normal?
Yes. And, you know, there's, there has to be overflow areas. We have 23 sites at the campground, so that's not going to hold everybody. We do have a larger parking lot there for car camping and they could just go ahead and camp in their cars. And there's some other areas that are real close by that, that could be utilized for that on a temporary basis.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. Thank you for the accommodations, Rex, and thank you for hosting here at Canyon City. And please let us know as the contract comes up, if you come down again, how we can welcome you and your runners here and have our visitors have a really good experience in Canyon City.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Yeah, congratulations. So I'm assuming we got thumbs up? There'll be more discussion? I mean, if you did, Andrea, are you okay?
Oh, I'm-
Okay.
With the run and bike too.
Yeah, run and bike.
Thumbs up for both.
Right.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay, so it's a thumbs up on the, on the running and the biking?
Yes.
Okay, she needs to know that, obviously, to promote her event.
Weather permitting, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Steve, thank you again for the Royal Cascade. I mean, round of applause to, like we said, to you and the Parks Department too. Super excited.
Steve is, we're lucky to have him.
One of our jants.
He's one of the best.
Yep. It's now time to open a public hearing. And this is for item 9A, introduction and first reading by title only of Ordinance 5, Series of 2022, entitled An Ordinance of the City of Canyon City Amending Certain Sections of Title 17 of the Canyon City Municipal Code Concerning Drainage Easements, Recreational Vehicle Parks, Enforcement of Title 17, and Definitions. Patrick?
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Sorry, good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the county, of City Council. This evening, we are conducting a public hearing on a draft ordinance, specifically Ordinance 5, Series of 2022, which as written, would make nine changes to the city's UDC, Unified Development Code. Council members may recall that at the time the city's UDC was adopted this past summer, it was explained that once the code became effective, it may be clear that despite the best efforts of everyone reviewing the new code, some items might simply have been omitted or found not to be working as well as intended. So an ordinance updating the code post-adoption was understood to be likely. The first of the changes involves the reinstatement of language to chapter 17.06 requiring the dedication of drainage easements. The easements allow the city to access important stormwater infrastructure for maintenance purposes that might not otherwise be accessible from a street. Under normal processes, these easements would have a dedicated, would have been dedicated to the city via recorded final plat. However, in the past, not every plat included the dedication language. This doesn't change the city's need to access these important stormwater infrastructure portions, but it meant the city had to request the dedication of easements by a separate document on a lot-by-lot basis at the time of building permit. Without the restoration of this language, the city's ability to require home builders to sign over these easements would be imperiled. The second proposed change adds definitions for final plat and site-specific development to chapter 17.13 of the UDC. These definitions are key to the city being able to structure improvement agreements for major subdivisions and site plans where the construction of public improvements such as roads, drainage infrastructure, and water lines would be necessary to serve the development. Such agreements are very important in that they serve to clarify exactly what public infrastructure a developer will be required to construct or install, cost estimate that construction, and then provide for financial security to ensure that the work gets completed even in the event of a developer default. The next two changes both have to do with modifying certain code requirements for accessory buildings as stated in section 17.05.140. As currently written, accessory buildings on lots with more than 10,000 square feet are, are, are limited to a maximum size of 1,000 square feet. This presents a problem because we already know there are a number of examples around Canyon City with accessory buildings in excess of 1,000 square feet. To keep the minimum, keep the minimum where it is would end up creating a lot, a whole new category of legal non-conforming lots citywide. Staff recommends that the city avoid a situation where we are creating legal non-conformities. Another modification pertains to the spacing between the principal building and an accessory building. It is currently specified as a five-foot minimum separation. This ordinance would reduce that number to three feet to account, again, this is primarily to avoid creating a new category of legal non-conforming lots as we do have a number of buildings that are up to three feet away from one another. The final modification ma, it makes to accessory buildings is to remove the limit of only one per lot, given that there are already a number of situations on lots around the city that have more than one accessory building. Instead, the limitation of building mass in residential lots would be a maximum 45% lot coverage regardless of the number of accessory buildings that would be built on that lot. The fifth change pertains to standards for recreational vehicle parks. In the old Title 17, section 17.20.145, this was part of the junk drawer of the old Title 17, contained a number of development standards for RV parks that were inadvertently omitted from the new UDC. This ordinance would reinstate those standards under chapter 1705, use-specific standards as a new provision under section 1705.110, recreational use-specific standards. There are no proposed changes from the old Title 17, section 1720.145. They are merely being added back in here. Staff believes there is a marked interest in the development community for new RV parks. We have observed that the county is certainly getting a number of inquiries regarding RV parks and the city approved RV park at Mariposa in 2019 for which the developer indicates he intends to commence construction soon. This is where it was felt that adding these standards back was something of a priority at this time. The next proposed change would create a new section within chapter 1701, general provisions. With the creation of section 1701.070, this new section adds language pertaining to the city's ability to enforce the Uniform Development Code. Occasionally, staff has to contact property owners about a zoning violation complaint received against a property. Staff's ability to both require a homeowner to bring their property back into compliance with the UDC and our ability to take that property owner to court in the event the property owner refuses to comply are hampered without the inclusion of this section. It should be noted that zoning violations are not treated as criminal offenses. They are infraction specifically investigated and where necessary prosecuted as civil offenses and subject to fines only. Also, as proposed, as proposed for change to the use standards in section 1705 is a lodging use standard in 1705.070. Specifically, paragraph B4 describes rooming or boarding houses and arrangements where a lodger rents a bedroom within a home. As currently written, these, these kinds of tendencies would be limited to only 30 days when in fact these rentals are specifically for a lot longer term than this. This change would eliminate the 30-day limit on rooming and boarding houses. Finally, an exception is being created within chapter 1707, the city's sign code in which murals can be authorized in public areas within the CB Central Business District. Currently, painted wall signs are permitted within the CB zone, but only to a maximum of 30% of the wall plane. This amendment would establish a carve-out specifically for murals being put in public areas. Under this provision, the city council would establish a mural program committee which would establish the rules for appropriate mural design and approve them, but only for display, as I said, in public areas. Now, the, per the public notice requirements for text amendments to Title 17 is specified in table 17.10.030C3D. This hearing has been advertised with a published notice to the city's website for at least 15 days. for at least 15 days prior to the city council public hearing. Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on this proposed ordinance at its regular meeting of January 26, 2022, and as a result of that public hearing, both staff and the Planning Commission recommend that the city council approve Ordinance 5 Series of 2022, making nine amendments to Title 17. That would conclude the staff presentation. As always, I'm happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Thank you, Patrick. Your presentations are always so well done. Just for the benefit of the council, as far as the painted signs on buildings that was kind of triggered by the 150th activities. One of the goals of the 150th Committee was to have some legacy projects that lasted beyond 2022. One of those will be the new sea on the hill that will be lit at night. And the second was to create some murals downtown. And we are in the process of soliciting a call to artists to put up at least two murals, two additional, well, two additional murals downtown, plus there will be one on Brews and Bikes. And Brews and Bikes is very eager to start the painting of their mural by Kat from the Karma Studios. Is it Karma Studios? Yeah. And, but they can't legally do that until we make this legal for them to do that. Among, and then, of course, there are the other items on here as well. So I just wanted to let you know kind of where that was triggered. And Councilmember Tracy?
Thanks. I just have a couple of questions. One, I, I'm not just, I'm not 100% clear. In your memo, Patrick, and then in the ordinance, there's reference to misdemeanors, and then there's also reference to civil offense, so. Misdemeanors are not civil, are they? Or I, I guess I'm just not clear on.
Misdemeanors is probably an incorrect word, an incorrect word usage. I would say infraction is probably the better word.
So maybe we need that change in the ordinance itself, do we think?
Well, I don't know. Did we use the word mis?
Yeah.
It, it is in there, but the, the exclusion of a, the penalty of imprisonment makes it so that language is still accurate. It is simply that it is a, it is a civil offense that is also frankly a misdemeanor, but it's not punishable by jail. And so that's why the, the language is very precise in there. We can certainly take it out. It is still a civil infraction, but the use of the term misdemeanor is not incorrect.
Okay, but I just wasn't sure if we needed to clarify that language, but I'll let the legal minds decide that.
Again, we can take it out if council doesn't like it, but the idea is it's not punishable by jail, so you don't, for example, have some of the rights you would have if your freedoms were taken away. But we can certainly delete that, that phrase in 17.01.070C.
And I don't know if there's anything more on that. My other question had to do with the RV park language, adding that back in. On page four, and it might just be me, four, let's see, G, Roman numeral two. That paragraph just is unclear to me, the way it's wording, I don't word it. I don't know if there's something left out. I read through it several times, and I just couldn't quite make it make sense, so I'll let someone else figure that out.
So is this the paragraph that reads, "The disposal hatch of sanitary station units shall be connected to the sewage disposal system?"
Yes, that paragraph.
Okay. And what, what was your question about this?
Well, that next sentence that reads, "Related facilities required to wash holding tanks and the general area of the sanitary station shall be connected to the RV park water supply system uses shall be provided at the rate of at least 10% of the gross area." That part of it right there just isn't clear to me, where it says, "Park, RV park water supply system uses shall be provided." Is there missing punctuation or missing words?
It looks like the word "and" should probably be inserted in there. I mean, this was taken from the old language, but I agree with you. It is awkward, and I would add the word "and" between uses and shall.
Okay, got it. Thanks.
Councilmember Smith?
Um, so I've, I've seen this presentation with Planning Commission, and while I do agree that we don't want to continue to put non, or legal non-conform, conforming buildings into things, and I do agree with all of Patrick's changes, and I know that when we wrote, when we rewrote 17, that we were going to have, this is a living, breathing document, and we're going to have changes. I just want to make sure, as we go through this process of adding things back into these titles, that we don't Frankenstein them together the way that they were when they needed rewritten, so.
We are doing our best to avoid creating the junk drawer.
Right, right.
Section for, for zoning. 1720 in the old code was where everything that we didn't have another place for got dumped.
Great. Glad to hear that.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had three, hopefully fairly quick things. One, I agree with Councilwoman Tracy. I would prefer to see guilty of a misdemeanor taken out, particularly because it comes before and upon conviction thereof. I'm also curious as to how this particular section will be enforced. Because I think that there, we have a lot of new requirements under the UDC that may or may not be being fully enforced at this time, so I'd like to understand how we will actually use 1701.070.
Yeah, and that, you know, that still goes back to our, our code enforcement. Patrick, as well, participates in that. We have, you know, code enforcement meetings on a monthly basis to, to look for and discuss possible infractions. So it, you know, it, it goes back to, you know, going back out there and identifying if there are violations and following through the process. But that, again, part of that is making sure that this language is put back in, so we can do that enforcement.
The, the only thing I would add is, in, in my experience as, with municipal courts, only those that compliance just can't be reached through any other tool do they end up in municipal court. And the way these violation provisions are structured, where each day is a separate violation, the goal frankly is to make it worth those violators' while to fix it rather than continuing to pay those fines, and that the prosecutorial tool is typically not to fine every day, but to get compliance.
Thank you. I really appreciate that amplification of what Mr. Mulgrady mentioned before. My second question had to do with the city mural program. I believe in your memo and in your presentation, you mentioned that it, that this language would like establish the city mural program committee and kind of what its roles and responsibilities would be, but I don't actually see that in the ordinance itself. So is that somewhere else?
We, we would have to bring, bring that back to you. What we're looking for this evening is consent about the ordinance. And once the ordinance, if the ordinance passes, then we would bring the structure for this committee back to you.
Okay, I guess I had just understood that we had a local business that was awaiting passage of this, but also now maybe that before we could act, before they can actually move forward.
So that, yeah, that is a good question. So they are waiting to, to start the mural. It has gone, there's a subcommittee on the 150th Esquinas Committee. That is a mural committee that has given the thumbs up, and it'll require an MOU with the building owner. And it'll be kind of like a grant program, or we will give, you know, and they will provide the painting. They'll be in charge of the maintenance over the years, but we'll help pay to make that happen. I don't know if that would be sufficient for that particular mural. I know that we'll be having extra committee meetings for the next two murals that will be coming up for those.
And, you know, the economic development manager, Rick Harmon, and myself have been reaching out to other communities to understand what they're, what they do for a mural program, so we're not starting from scratch. We have, have a baseline of what these programs look at and how they function, so that we can put something together fairly quickly.
So I guess one of the clarifications is, do we need to have a more official process for the mural at Bikes and Brews to move forward after this ordinance is passed?
Yeah, I think we should have an official, you know, meeting to, you know, make sure that it falls into compliance with all of these items.
Okay, and that will be through the 150th Committee. Okay.
And then just my, my last question or point was, I had raised multiple concerns about Title 17 as we were going through the UDC process, and I think through great collaborative conversation, most of those have been resolved. Several of them are in this omnibus, which is great, but there are still a few outstanding concerns that I had. I know one of them was discussed at Planning Commission, but I guess I'm wondering, when can we expect to see Omnibus 2?
So we are, at this point, planning on going back with Omnibus 2. We want to, you know, see which, which items float to the top in terms of the immediacy of wanting to get them fixed, and hopefully go back to Planning Commission in May and council in June with a second Omnibus.
Okay, thank you very much. I look forward to a conversation before then, so we make sure that, that those last regulars that I have have also been resolved.
Mayor Protem Hamrick?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Number one, I just wanted to say, one of the things that I like about this, especially in the accessory dwelling units, is that the, the city's interest is in really percent of lot coverage and not in the number of units. And I applaud the, the thoughtfulness that went into that, to allow people the, the freedom to do what they want within their lot while still maintaining, while still, you know, navigating within the city's guidelines for lot coverage. And so I, the, you know, regulations that allow maximum freedom while protecting the legitimate interest of the city are greatly appreciated. And then going back to the, to page four and G, sanitary, sanitary disposal systems. I think that, that we're probably not done with that paragraph two, the disposal. So we, my wife and I have an RV, and we have used, you know, sanitary disposal pads at RV parks all over the country. They are generally smaller than the footprint of the RV, and the, the, the purpose and function of them is to catch any drippage from the sewage tanks of the RV when loading is happening or washing is happening, so that, so that that drippage can be washed into the sanitary sewer system. This says that we're requiring... I'm not exactly sure what, what we're requiring, whether we're requiring a size of the pad or what is, what is the 10% in reference to.
I frankly can't tell you because this was done many, many years ago when a previous council determined this appropriate, so I really have no idea. This was literally cut and pasted.
Okay, so, so let's, let's see if we can fix it here. "Related facilities required to wash holding tanks and the general area of the sanitary station shall be connected to the RV park water supply system." That probably should be period.
Okay.
And the rest of it really does not make.
It's hard to know what it means.
Make sense. I, I would not know how to comply with that. Yes?
Mayor Protem, I, I believe that this is, it's more of a demand issue. I don't know that it's necessarily, because it's talking about the, it's talking about two different things, it appears in this paragraph. First of all, it's talking about the sewage disposal system, but then it's also talking about the water supply system. So it, it, it's like the water supply system use is at 10% of the gross area of the RP, RV park. I think that they're using that to determine how much their water service is, not necessarily how much the sewage disposal area is. There's, there seems to be two pieces in this paragraph, not, it's not very clear. I think we need to clear that up.
And that whole section is under G, which is?
Sanitary Sewer Disposal.
It's the disposal station. It's not a site-specific.
To each, each, to each units, to each RV pad.
Yeah, I, it's, maybe we need to just kind of go through that.
So, so the, the, on the water supply issue, all that, all that is required is, is a water, a, a water hose bib, just like you have at any RV park that has, any RV space that has water supplied to it.
Correct, but from our perspective, when we're talking about water distribution, we're talking about sizing. So if we're sizing for an RV park, we have to make sure that they, we have this, a feasible-sized main or service to that RV park, so that they give us, they're, they're giving us, you know, fixture counts, basically, you know, what, what would it take to, you know, supply an average RV per day, yada, yada, yada. So that's what we're looking for, and it could be that that's, you know, just kind of, kind of throw it on the wall. It, 10% size is what it is that we're doing for, but that's the only thing I can think of.
And it wouldn't be under G, though, would it?
Yeah, I wouldn't think so.
Corey?
From what I'm hearing, and I, I, I'm not, I don't have an RV, so I'm, I'm going based on what I'm hearing between Kim and Mayor Protem. If that's the case, then after system, it would be period, such uses. And then it would have the remainder of the sentence, because I think that satisfies what Kim is talking about, which is the relationship of those uses to the overall water supply being provided to the park. So that's, if those are the two interests we're trying to meet, that's how I would amend that paragraph.
And, and I would add on to that, that, that the, probably the, the, the air, the amount that we're going to apply the 10% to should not be an area, but should be number of spaces. Isn't that really what we're, isn't that what you're, what the?
It should be a more usable governor of what it is that you're trying to do. I mean, a, a space and area really doesn't tell us how much usage we're going to have or how much sewage we're going to dispose. Neither of those two things actually apply to this, so I'm not sure why, why they used a, a land area, because I mean, you could put, you know, 10 RVs on five acres, and it wouldn't mean anything to me, whereas, you know, I need to know how many spaces, exactly what you said.
So should we delete the rest of that sentence? I mean, just delete that sec, that last sentence? That's what it sounds like.
Put a period after system, and then the rest of the sentence?
Is deleted.
Yeah, I would say so. I mean, unless, unless we want to come up with some other criteria.
If you already have something that would answer the question about how much water supply and so forth, then I wouldn't see needing it here.
There's an industry standard typically.
But if it's not in our code, can you enforce it?
You can as part of the development plan. One of the advantages to an RV park is you get approval of a development plan. And so each of our referral agencies, including our water department, for example, and to the extent Fremont Sanitation has, would have an opportunity to review, so I do think you could.
And, and typically, at least in the cases of some of the RV parks that we're seeing coming through the development process, we're requesting feasibility studies, and that puts it back on the engineer to tell us how much water is they're going to need.
Sure, and hopefully sewage capacity.
Correct.
The, so, so yes, I would agree with that, that period, and strike the rest of the sentence, because it, we're not, I don't think we're getting to what we, what needs to be talked about, but our general procedures will get us there.
Yes, okay. So it would be, so the paragraph then would end after, after the word "system", and the remainder of that paragraph would be deleted.
Ted Look, okay?
Is there any other discussion? Is there anyone in the public that would wish to address the council on this public hearing? I will now close the public hearing and call for a motion. If you so choose, you can have an amendment to strike guilty of misdemeanor phrase, and would recommend that you definitely amend item G2 under RV sanitary disposal stations to put a period after system and strike the rest of the paragraph.
Madam Mayor, if I could, on the, on the section related to the penalty, what I would simply do is delete the word misdemeanor and replace it with the words civil infraction. I think that will flow better in the entire paragraph. So it would say, "For each and every violation, guilty of a civil infr- infraction and upon conviction thereof." It would just replace that misdemeanor with the word civil infraction.
Okay, so the amendment would be to replace misdemeanor with civil infraction, and then again, item G2. and then again, item G2, the striking of the last sentence. Councilmember Schmisher.
Sorry, Corey, I just have a question about that. The, like, the sequencing of it, saying that they are guilty of a civil infraction before they are convicted of the civil infraction?
That would, that's pretty common, to have that language that way. So it is describing what you are guilty of, and upon conviction of the civil infraction, that's the penalty, which is the maximum fine in section 1.28.010.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Mayor Protem Hamrick.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mayor and council, I move that we approve ordinance number five, series of 2022, upon, this is first reading, is that correct, with the edits of striking the word misdemeanor and substituting civil infraction under 1701-070C, and on page four of our ordinance under G2, inserting a period after "system," and then striking the rest of the sentence after that.
A second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call vote.
Councilmember Dennehy.
Aye.
Councilmember Schmisher.
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Stein.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracy.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Hamrick.
Aye.
Thank you, council. Thank you, Patrick, and staff. We appreciate your work on this. We're now going to have a discussion on item 10A, introduction and adoption by title only of Resolution 3, series of 2022, entitled, "A Resolution of the City Council of Canyon City, Colorado Approving the Purchase and Sale Agreement with Mary Louise Ellis for the Property Located in Fremont County, Canyon City, Colorado."
The Rhodes Avenue project has been a project that we've been working on since 2019, and we've been working to get easements or purchase agreements for the, the space that we need in order to install the stormwater system. And this is a purchase agreement for a strip of land needed for this particular project, and I will turn it over to Kim Swerengen to see if there are any other questions. This previously came before council in December. We had to renegotiate, and this is the renegotiated price, and the seller has signed the paperwork so far.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council. It is my great pleasure to bring this to you tonight, and I apologize that this will be the second time that you have seen this. Unfortunately, due some, due to some unfortunate timing within the development world, we had to renegotiate this price. The original contract was for $36,547.39. We have come to an agreement of $50,000 for this strip of land that you see right here. It will facilitate the completion or the construction of the Rhodes Avenue project, which will be coming across Highway 50 here and making its way down to the Arkansas River. This portion right here will be a box culvert through Mr. Geem's property, also is a box culvert, and continue an open ditch all the way to the river. Now I just stand for questions.
Kim, I just want to thank you for your tireless work on this project. I mean, this has been years in the making, with hiccup after hiccup, and hopefully this is the final hiccup.
Yes, ma'am.
To get one of our number one hotspots of stormwater flooding finally resolved.
Yes, ma'am. And, as you may, or may not know, for the benefit of our new council members, the Abbey drainage is, and we'll talk about it more in the next item, should we move forward, but the Abbey drainage actually goes all the way north of Central, and then goes all the way to the Arkansas River. So it's, it's a very large drainage. Even though it's called the Abbey, it is actually truly from the Ridgeline to about 15th Street. So it's very large, and we have lots of issues on the north side of town through, you know, various neighborhoods and ultimately development that funnels down into this particular area.
How many of those culverts under Highway 50? I mean, there's three existing. Only one is opened. Will we be able to open more after this project is done?
We'll be able to open all three.
Oh, wow. Okay.
Which is huge.
Mm-hmm, yes, it is.
Which is very huge.
Also, for the benefit of previous council, we had had many discussions with the hydraulic ditch company that probably initiated this conversation of getting this project done and getting the, the bond to fund it, because also we were illicit, illicitly putting stormwater into their, um...
That is correct.
Into their ditch.
That is correct. We have a continuing problem all over Canyon City about putting stormwater in all of the ditches, not just hydraulic.
And even regular rainstorms were causing some pretty severe flooding to the Humane Society and to the neighbors going down to the river.
Correct.
And, and they were quite heated discussions. We actually had an entire advisory council that was researching and trying to come up with solutions on how to alleviate this flooding and not have an impending lawsuit come to Canyon City. And man, I think we're finally getting there.
Yes, we are, thankfully.
But if you, if you want more enlightenment, I, I have like this big of a stack of documentation and studies and complaints that, that I'm happy to share with you.
And unfortunately, this isn't the last time this subject will come before.
No, it's not. I mean, there's just a huge legacy of neglect in this item, and I'm excited that we're finally able to start making headway on some more solutions. Ryan Stevens?
I, I think we've, we've danced around it, but I, I do want to state for the record that this project moves forward with or without the Abbey development. This, this was something that was needed before there were any suitors for the Abbey project, and, you know, certainly will be needed regardless of whether or not that project moves forward.
Well, thank you for that public comment and clarification. So even if on the actual Abbey property, if they do any development, they have to remediate their stormwater impact on their own property. So if there's needs for detention ponds, that will happen on their property, and there won't be any added stormwater. I'm trying to think of the right word to go with that.
They have to maintain historic flows.
Correct.
They have to maintain those historic flows. So this project here has absolutely nothing to do with the Abbey development on the Abbey property. This has to do with 50 years of worth of development that's been happening on a larger scale.
Yes, ma'am. Up until probably about the 1980s, it was not really a priority for engineers or city planners to worry about stormwater, so they took no action whatsoever. We are reaping the whirlwind of that, those decisions, and we have functioning and non-functioning infrastructure that we just need to slowly work our way through.
Unfortunately, it comes, in this particular case, with this over $6 million price tag, which is quite hefty.
Yes.
Madam Mayor, it might be worth, just because I know there are some new council members, drainage 101 in maybe one paragraph, which is, "The upstream property has an easement over the downstream property for drainage at the historic rate. But anytime you take what is historic and change it by putting in things like pavement, that changes the historic rate. So anytime there's more water than is historic, the property owner is supposed to account for that, either by detention, which then detains the water and has it go downstream at the historic weight rate, or retention, which is holding it and not letting it go downstream." So these are all part of getting back to historic flows, because if water goes at more than the historic rate and damages the downstream property, the upstream property is responsible for that damage. And this is an attempt to fix all of those issues over time.
Yes, as, we have a, a policy, or, you know, an engineering kind of way of thinking, as we call it zero impact development, and that means that whatever you choose to do, you must account for it.
Councilmember Tracy?
What you said just made me think about floodplains, and how recent is our floodplain mapping in the East Canyon area? And once this project is done, will that need to be updated?
Um, so I met with FEMA, I believe it was probably in December, where they are actually updating all of our floodplain maps here in Fremont County. That is probably a two-year project they were outlining for us. They are going to go through, actually, they've already done a lot of preliminary work. They're looking through LiDAR data, our GIS data, our various project data, you know, because we've changed the floodplains, you know, based on projects, you know, intermittently throughout the city, because developers like to, you know, get out of the floodplain, because it costs them money. So they do various engineering fixes, and then they have to do what's called a LOMER or a CLOMER, or a letter of map revision through FEMA, and so they update their maps in piecemeal. But FEMA has come to Fremont County, and they're going to do that all in one fell swoop. They updated the Arkansas River not too long ago, so they're starting to branch out. But preliminarily, it looks like they're kind of expanding some of those tributary floodplains, but that all depends on our data as well that they have not received. But we are working with them for the next couple of years to get that done.
Yeah, that's good to hear. I, you know, I think back, when I was on council in the 80s, the East Canyon floodplain, people used to think, if they didn't know much about Canyon City, that flooding was a risk along the river. It's almost never been a risk along the river, other than back in 1995, when the Riverwalk had to be rebuilt in one section. But it's been that East Canyon drainage that has always been the issue. So I'm looking forward to this fixing it, right?
Portions of it, yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Are we ready for a motion? Councilmember Tracy?
I move for adoption of Resolution 3, series of 2022, resolution of the City Council of Canyon City approving the purchase and sale agreement with Mary Louise Ellis for the property located in Fremont County, Canyon City, Colorado.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call a vote.
Councilmember Dennehy.
Aye.
Councilmember Schmisher.
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Stein.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracy.
Aye.
Mayor, Mayor Protem Hamrick.
Yes, yes, yes.
I love it. For each three culverts. I think we're all cheering for this, so thank you again for...
Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
...finessing this to make it ha, make it finally come to fruition. So we'll move on to the item B, and that's toward the bid, 5021 for Rhodes Avenue. So back to you.
Correct. Thank you very much. As Mayor Smith alluded to, our, our project has gone out to bid for the Rhodes Avenue project. We have been working with Atkins Engineering for the past couple of years, getting that designed as a result of the easement and purchase of the Ellis property. We posted this bid on Rocky Mountain E-Purchasing, also known as BidNet, on November 11th. Bids were opened on December 10th. At that time, we only had one qualified apparent low bidder, and that's Avalanche Excavating of Canyon City. Their, their base bid was $5,887,887,906 for the complete project. That includes the bid alternate. What the bid alternate is, is that box culvert through the Ellis property. That was a condition of their purchase agreement, was that we boxed it all the way through their property, so that they would not be flooded out. After the bid came in, we began negotiations with Fremont Sand, as they requested that we look at, including their work with our work, to see if they could get a better price. That was not the way it worked out, so they took it back, and they are doing it internally, in-house, where they will also employ Avalanche Excavating to do some crossings for them as well, so that we have kind of a meshing of schedules. This eliminated approximately $666,253.11 from the projected project costs, bringing the base bid plus alternates to $5,221,464.95. And with the 15% contingency of $783,219.74, brings the total project cost to $6,4684.69. We budgeted $3,304,262, and you can see, we basically doubled in cost when it came to our budgeting. Some of this is due to material costs, but when I was looking at the engineer's estimate, it actually looks like our base bid is on track with what the engineer's estimate was. The biggest accounting for the newer costs is those borings under Highway 50 and under the river, or, excuse me, under the railroad. So we anticipated approximately $200,000 for the stormwater boring, but it came in nearly a million dollars. So it's three times the amount that what they had budgeted. The other two borings were about $100,000, and we came in at about $200,000 to $300,000 on those borings. So it was those borings that really brought us up over that budgeted amount. What is very interesting, though, is we have, we budgeted 3.3 million, but we actually have 4.9 million left in the actual COP fund. So I asked our finance director to give us that number on the 31st of December last year, so the total was 4.9 million, of which that covered a portion of the project, plus we have some money from the water department for their water main work that we will be doing in Rhodes Avenue, as well as $200,000 from the county. So that brings our total shortfall to $183,605.89. You can see in the council memo that that brings it to a project number of zero, should we use ARPA funds or American Rescue Plan Act funds to help fund this project.
And Kim, I'd probably further add, and I don't, I don't know if it accounts for as much money as having triple and double the estimated amount on the borings, but when we originally went to the engineering firm to design it, they kind of designed like the best-case, most efficient, best bang for your buck product. But then we got the hydraulic ditch came in and said, "Well, whoa, 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 we, we are going to demand this, this, and this to be changed." And so we had to go back and make more changes, which increased the costs.
Correct.
And then some of our personal property, our property owners also had some demands that had to go back and make some changes that also added to those costs. So part of that was also being a good neighbor...
Correct.
...to both the hydraulic ditch and to the private property owners, whereas, I mean, we could have said, "We don't care. We're doing what we want, how we want," but we really wanted to make, as best as we could, make all parties as, I mean, you can't make them 100% happy, but...
Correct. Yes, Madam Mayor.
Do the best we could with taxpayer money.
You are very correct in the fact that if you look at the, the bid tab that was given to you, when we're talking about that bulk, box culvert that goes to the Ellis property, that's actually the bid alternate that you see in there, and you'll see that that's a cost of almost $600,000. So I mean, when we're talking about, you know, being a good neighbor, that is what it costs to be a good neighbor. And that's just one aspect of the project that you've mentioned. I mean, not including, you know, the Oil Creek Ditch and everything like that.
Any other questions? Councilmember Smith?
I just wanted, for clarification to people watching, can you break down those numbers again, and why it comes to a zero balance? Because when people hear 6 million, the questions pile up, so.
Yes, sir. So the $6 million actually comes from, so the base bid is $4 million, or $4,39253.50. That is the base bid. That is just the basic Rhodes Avenue stormwater bid. The, in, the institution of the box culvert in the Ellis property came to $594,223.15. That's an added cost to the base bid. So, and then we also have our water main work, which came to $238,788.30, as well as some road improvements that we have to do based on the county requirements, as well as a guardrail for safety. Some of this, you have to keep in mind, I mean, I'll go through the other part where we come to a zero balance in a second, but there's also some opportunity for some value engineering that we're going to be looking into. When it comes to this, especially the road reconstruction, after all the construction is finished, we're looking to do some of the work with our own crews, plus some county crews. So we would purchase material, and then the county would install it. So some of those kind of value engineering things, plus we have an opportunity to possibly use some of our local resources when it comes to rock and those kinds of things, instead of using, say, the Fleximatt. But those are engineering kind of changes that we would have to go through with the designer after we award. Those are the kinds of questions that have been coming to me from the contractor that we can address until that time. So we, we could see some cost savings and help, you know, the residents and the taxpayers of Canyon City, but we won't know that till after we bid. So those are the numbers, you know, kind of laid out in regards to the project itself. When it comes to the funding, again, we had about 4, 4.9 million dollars left of the COP fund, which is the money that was borrowed against those stormwater projects that we had talked about. projects that we had talked about earlier. I believe that it was approximately $8 million, Ryan, that was borrowed?
Yes.
And this is the remainder. So over the years, you know, as it sits in account, it gains interest, and that's, you know, what had been left plus the interest. After that, we had the two funds from water and from the county that came to $896,600. So that's another reduction in the project cost. And then using that ARPA money to make up the $183,604.89 would bring that basically budgeted to zero. We would have enough money to do the project.
Can you explain ARPA? Just for the record?
ARPA is the American Rescue Plan, and Administrator Stevens can talk a little bit more about what it is that we had talked about in the past, about using that money for. We had planned on, ARPA actually covers water, broadband, some possible lost revenue for the city, and I think that's it, right? Or is there one other thing?
Those are the big ticket items for ARPA. The city received $4.1 million allocation through federal legislation. That was the big stimulus that was passed about a year ago. So we have those funds available to us. The city has received half of those funds last year. We'll receive the other half in May of this year. And the use of those funds is for these types of projects, is for infrastructure type of projects.
And is this the entire balance of our ARPA funds?
No.
Okay.
This would be the first ARPA project, you know, that we'd actually, well, there's a million dollars that we've set aside for the Reynolds-Afney Waterline. We're looking at broadband projects where we have some money that has been budgeted. So, you know, those are the types of projects that we're looking at.
Thank you.
We'll have another future conversation with the council and staff on how we definitely want to use those ARPA funds, because we've also had some requests from the community as well. Councilmember Schmisher?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just sticking with the ARPA topic for a minute, I know you had come to a previous, I think it was a general government meeting, and kind of had a rough sketch of how you might allocate the 4.1 million in ARPA. Where would you imagine this would come from? What would you eliminate?
Well, you know, we, when I came to council previously, you know, we had identified some cybersecurity, we had identified, you know, the water and broadband projects that I previously mentioned. There's some that's unallocated, and we have an upcoming council retreat to discuss, you know, how to allocate those funds. So this would come from those unallocated funds.
Okay. And then a similar question. My understanding is that this would use the balance of the COP funds? Were there other stormwater projects that therefore will not be done, that those funds had been kind of notionally earmarked forthwith?
Another way to say that is that we have the total cost estimate to fix stormwater in Canyon City is $70 million. So there's, we have a small portion that we've borrowed and are applying to stormwater problems. There's still a huge problem remaining.
Absolutely. I'm wondering what priority projects aren't going to get done because of this?
The more specific answer for the next project was looking at the WPA drainage. But even with this project coming in at budget, there'd be questions about whether or not we had enough money to do the WPA project.
Okay. And then my last question was, I noticed on the second page that there are some other expenses involved with this project that the city does not yet know the amounts for, which obviously makes me a little bit leery, given how we've kind of hodgepodge together the funding to get us to zero. So I'm wondering if you can give us a little bit more fidelity on that?
So this project is for the construction of the Abbey Roads project only. Unfortunately, with that project comes other, I don't know, would you say overhead costs, I guess you would say, when it comes to crossing the railroad. And the railroad is the biggest unknown so far. And the reason that is, is because the applicant is the contractor. So when we allow the contractor to apply to the railroad, he goes and he gets the permits, he goes and goes through the engineering review, and then ultimately what will happen is we will have to sign a license agreement with the railroad, because our utility will be underneath the railroad. Those are the costs we don't know. They won't even give us an estimate until they see the application, and then they review the engineering plans.
Do we have an independent government cost estimate of what we internally think that it will cost? And do we have the funds that, I mean, how do we envision paying for this?
So, I mean, the railroad has their
Oh, and to be clear, I'm not asking for that number.
Sure, no, yeah, yeah, yeah. So the railroad has their, you know, price points. I mean, but it could be anywhere from $10,000 to ungodly known amounts of money. I mean, the application amounts are about $5,000 to do those. But, I mean, once they do the license agreement, that's totally completely up to them.
So how do we envision paying for this?
We haven't really talked about that yet, have we, Ryan? Are we talking?
That's where those cost-saving things come into play?
Possibly, yes.
Yeah, that's when you start working the
You have, you know, the potential for those cost savings. You still have unallocated funds from ARPA that could help cover some of those costs as well.
Okay. Because to be clear, if we don't pay for, like, that is a necessary component of this project.
Correct.
Is there a timeline on when we might know?
We could have an answer anywhere from a couple of months to six months. They, that's the timing that they give us, and we could be as long as nine months before we get the license agreement.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I think to quote former Commissioner Tim Payne, it's first comes the railroads, then God, then country.
From what I hear, it's shipping, railroads, C dot, and then God.
Don't forget the ditch companies.
It keeps getting longer. I would like to suggest that when we have our ARPA discussion for unallocated funds, that we plug in the WPA ditch too as part of that conversation piece. Are we ready for a motion?
Councilmember Smith?
Madam Mayor and Council, I move to award bid 5021 for Rhodes Avenue. Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? I'll call a vote, please.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Stein?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracy?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Aye.
Thank you, Council. Thank you, Kim, and staff.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we're moving on to item C, introduction and first reading by title only of Ordinance Three Series of 2022 entitled, An Ordinance of the City of Canyon City Amending Chapter 5.30 of the Canyon City Municipal Code Concerning Liquor Licensing.
Madam Mayor, this Ordinance Three covers the discussion that we had at a general government meeting earlier this year, making those changes. And I will turn it over to the city attorney for any questions. This is the common consumption area, and, I'm sorry, what were the other two changes?
Communal dining area.
Thank you.
Any questions from staff? Or from council? Councilmember Stein?
I have a basic question. And the last time we discussed liquor code, and we talked about, you know, distances, the minimum distances, who is responsible for measuring that before council votes?
That is a great question. So the applicant has to be eligible to do the initial measurement. But if we have any questions, we can certainly verify that. But it is in the application that they do that. And I think the disconnect in the previous license was when the applicant applied, the liquor store, the retailer in question wasn't there. And so that's what created the issue on the previous license.
Right. Because is there, I mean, if you, on the previous one, if you look at, it's like a triangle right now. And, I mean, if you walk it off between City Market and one of them, I don't see how it can be, you know, meet those requirements. And it's not that I want to, you know, nitpick, but I think down the road, we may have other people come in who'll say, well, you let them do it closer, that kind of thing. So maybe there's something, maybe our, some department, Ryan, that could, you know, verify before we actually vote. Does that make sense?
It does. I think, at least in that particular instance, that, you know, those two applications crossed, basically crossed in the mail.
Thank you.
Well, I think the concern is the new liquor store in Canyon Plaza and the door to City Market. Is that what you're seeing? Or?
It's the door to the natural grocers.
Okay. Because City Market has a liquor license as well. And there's three right there, yeah.
Because I think the code says something about the type of license that Canyon Wine and Spirits
That is correct. That's correct.
It's because they sell the spirits.
Yeah, it's a retail liquor store license as opposed to a, what's known as an FMB license.
Okay. That makes sense.
Although today's discussion is just about the liquor code in general, overall. Councilmember Schmisher?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to thank the city staff for reaching out to Goal Academy and to the school district to ensure that they didn't have any concerns about this change. So it was great to see in your memo that both the Goal Academy principal and the superintendent of Canyon City Schools are both comfortable with this change in the liquor code.
Yes. Added thanks.
Thank you.
I'd like to entertain a motion. Councilmember Dennehy?
Madam Mayor and Council, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Ordinance Three Series of 2022, the change to the liquor code.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? I'll call a vote.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Stein?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracy?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Aye.
Thank you, Council. Thank you, Corey. I appreciate it. Also, a grand thanks to those still in the audience after this long meeting. We are now on item 10D, introduction and first reading by title only of Ordinance Four Series of 2022 entitled, An Ordinance of the City of Canyon City Amending the Title 10 of the Canyon City Municipal Code by the Addition of a New Chapter 10.10 Concerning UTVs.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We had a general government meeting in December to discuss the use of UTVs on city streets and alleyways. This was something that was brought to the city via a citizen group, and we formed a working committee with citizens and staff to discuss, and council members to discuss, the possibility of allowing UTVs on city streets. The ordinance in front of you includes those safety measures that we talked about, and includes, UTVs would have to have, you know, front lights, turn signals, speedometer. And one thing that we did remove from the previous ordinance that was in the previous ordinance was permitting by the city. So we are not going to permit locally. We're going to rely on Colorado Parks and Wildlife to, you know, people who have gone through that process and have the updated sticker on their UTVs will be allowed to ride on the city streets. And happy to take any questions.
I like that streamlining with working to the BLM.
Councilmember Stein?
Yes. I know I checked something with Ryan earlier, but under, where it says, under the B part, where it says, "The public road means and shall include any road, street, alley, avenue, thoroughfare, public way, or other public property within the city," I would, I'm sure that legally we don't have to do this, but I have constituents who have a concern about this because of, there was a problem about 10 years ago with the hogbacks. And at that time, these utility vehicles, and it was a lot of other things too, it was kind of out of control. And they were just concerned, is there going to be safeguards that, so, I mean, could we add something there unless otherwise posted? Or do, I mean, I don't want it to be redundant, but
We could, or we could delete or other public property.
Well, whatever you think, you know.
I mean, one of the issues is whether you want to limit these to roads. And I think that's sort of the core question. If you want to limit them to roads, then I would say delete or other public property. If you don't want to limit them to roads, then you could have, unless otherwise posted. So I think that's a policy question for the council.
Right. I just wanted to make sure that it would be clear for the citizens that want to do this. And the second thing is parking, is there, are there any special things? Because I wasn't part of council when they discussed it. Is there going to be any special way to help these folks with parking? Because they'll need parking too, just like
So if I can elaborate, because I was part of the work sessions that we went through, Mandy and I, the whole point of this is to allow them to ride them on the roads to a trail, so that they don't have to trailer. And then the trailers and trucks aren't littering the roads up to the trailheads, if that makes any sense. So I think if we took out or other public property, that would kind of alleviate the whole purpose for them to just be able to jump in their UTV and go to the trail.
Correct?
Yes, yes.
So I don't, you know, in that case, then maybe just say unless otherwise posted, because, and I'm not sure if all of the trailheads have posted in that area up in District One, if it's posted that there's no motor vehicles. There's at least one trailhead up there where it's not posted.
The hogbacks is such a different situation, because there was, there was great concern about the decay of the environment that was happening with all the dirt bikes that were being ridden over there. But I don't know if there's anything posted.
But the language allows us to post as necessary. And, you know, there could be other trails where frankly, that would qualify for this, where UTVs may not, based on their size, based on other things, may not be appropriate. So I think it does give the city flexibility to post if it needs to.
Are there any trails within the city limits besides the hogbacks that a UTV could go on?
I think, you know, the other question that Councilmember Stein asked about was the Riverwalk, and the Riverwalk is also non-motorized.
Yeah.
Is that, is that posted already?
It should be, yeah.
I would just say, Madam Mayor, I believe in Administrator Stevens, please correct me if I'm wrong, one of the projects that maybe FCTC, that one of the entities is looking at grant funding for is mapping where UTVs could access trails. So I think that there, that that work is also being done.
Yeah, and I think, I think you're correct. I think it's beyond UTVs. I think they're looking at ATVs as well. So all motorized extracurricular activities.
Okay. Councilmember Tracy?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I had traded emails earlier with city attorneys, and I think copied city Administrator Stevens. When I looked at, well, I'm in Section 1010-010, the definition section, but then in A instead of B where we were talking. And it references the Colorado Revised Statute as being a place where it defines what a UTV is. When I went and looked at that statute, it really didn't. It talked about off-highway vehicles and ATVs are defined somewhere, ATVs are defined elsewhere. Attorney Sellers suggested some language in an email, so I just want to throw this out here for considerations, just so that there's not confusion anywhere about what a UTV is, since it's not apparently defined explicitly in the statute. She wondered if maybe, or suggested that we might change that wording in A to say, "Utility terrain vehicles, UTV, shall have the same meaning as off-highway vehicles in CRS and then the Site 33-14.5-101, as may be amended, except it shall not include all terrain vehicles,"
as that is defined in 462-102, as may be amended. And to me, that just clarifies a little bit that we're, it, it's not explicitly defined in state statute unless you understand that it has the same meaning as off-highway vehicles in this citation.
Okay.
And that last, that last piece of clarification is exactly correct. The, the reference in the statute is to the same term, but it's called something different in the state. And so, um, this, the language that, uh, Councilmember Tracy just read would link those two definitions together.
Fantastic. Councilmember Smith?
Oh, no, this was from before. Sorry.
Okay. I would like to give an opportunity for our dedicated citizens to have a chance to address city council. Um, we'll start in the order that they were received. Tim McCain.
Thank you. Uh, I appreciate, uh, you guys doing this for us, um, and being invited to the, uh, open discussion that we had. And, uh, but I was a little, I was a little disappointed. Um, if you remember, it was back in March of, uh, 2020, I approached council, uh, as a member of the Royal Gorge ATV Club to open three miles of some city road from, from up north, uh, into downtown, about three miles. And, um, seemed like, uh, at the time, uh, council was pretty positive on it. We kind of did a thumbs up, uh, pursuing it a later date, and then COVID showed up, and this, that, and the other, and things kind of got put on the back burner. But, um, when I attended the first, uh, discussion that we had had, um, I was, I was kind of disappointed that A T Vs weren't included in the, in the ordinance, or were going to be, were not going to be included with, with the, uh, in the new ordinance. And, and when I asked about how come, it was, it was about safety. And I, I'd just like some clarification, you know, uh, how are, how are they, you know, less, less safe than, uh, somebody on a mobility scooter, or, or somebody on a moped, or, or, there's folks running around town on bicycles that have gasoline motors on them? Um, you know, um, so I just don't understand how they're not, how A T Vs aren't, aren't safe. Um, I have a photograph that I took today, or a friend emailed to me of, of a mobility scooter right here on Main Street in the, in the roundabout. You know, I'd like to know, you know, how are they, how are they safer than what my 800-pound A T V would be? And pass that around if you want to see that, so. But that's my question. I'd just like to ask council to maybe reconsider and, um, maybe add A T Vs to the, to the ordinance. Um, I'm not going to be riding my A T V all over town. Uh, I use it. I have a plow on it. I u, I, I, uh, plow snow. Uh, I help, I got a lot of elderly people in my neighborhood. I go plow their driveways for them and things like that during the winter. And, uh, you know, not being able to, uh, I guess legally be on the road with my A T V, it just kind of, you know, it just kind of, um, I'd like just to be able to do that, so, help folks out.
Thank you, Tim. Um, Brandon, do you want, as a member of that committee, do you have enlightenment?
Um, I might actually defer this to Ryan, but I believe that the discussion was based off of the chief of police's discretion.
It, it was, and we have Commander Tim Bell here to talk about safety and A T Vs. I don't know if you're prepared, sir, to discuss that. Um, you know, one of the things that we talked about or was mentioned previously was, um, you know, but, you know, the U T Vs having roll bars, um, you know, visibility issues. Um, I, I understand Mr. McCain's concern about, uh, mobility scooters, but technically those aren't allowed either.
Yeah, there's been some...
So I mean, if they can, why can't I? You know, I mean, uh...
And Commander Bell, do you want to go ahead and just take a seat at the staff table so you can ch, pipe in whenever?
There were discussions about golf carts as well. There, there was a whole bunch, and, um, at the end, I think we just left it up to the chief and took his...
Yeah, I, I think, you know, the, the other piece of this is, you know, we're kind of dipping our toe in the water with U T Vs to see how it goes.
Let's, let's, yeah, take some baby steps. Plus, uh, A T Vs are currently being ban, banned at several cities, including, um, Silverton and Moab, and so there's definitely...
And U T Vs, not just A T Vs. All off-highway vehicles are banned in Silverton.
Right, so there's definitely some controversies that are happening, um, throughout the country and in Colorado, and we want to be careful that we don't dip our toe into those controversies, um, too quickly at this time.
Yeah, there's just, I mean, there's a lot of other communities in the state that do allow both. You know, I realize Canyon City's a little bit bigger population than some of the others, but, um, you know, if there were people that were to move here, uh, it would just, it would just be better if everybody was on the same page. You know, U T Vs and A T Vs, um, just so, you know, well, let's go to Canyon City and ride, and then realize, oop, we can't do that here. You know, when other, other, uh, towns and cities do that, allow it, so. That was my concern. I just, uh, would just, it was just kind of disappointing. You know, just those not being allowed when there's other vehicles running around town that they're are allowed. You know, uh, kids on scooters and...
Right, thank you. Thank you for your feedback. We appreciate your time and commitment on this issue. Um, before I turn the time over to Commander Bell to address CCPD, um, concerns and recommendations, I would like to invite Ryan Hand to come and address city council.
Uh, good evening, Council. Um, I didn't really want to come up and beat a dead horse more than we've, than we've already done with this, already at this point. Um, I, I mostly just wanted to take the time, uh, to thank council and city employees and everyone that's put their hands in this, as well as our local law enforcement, uh, and giving us the time and the opportunity to have a little platform to stand on and ask you guys to give us the opportunity to do this. I know that it's not everybody's taste per se, but I appreciate that everyone's had an open mind and, and giving a bunch of us big children an opportunity to show you that we could really try to be responsible adults and have the opportunity to do this. Um, and, you know, in saying that, uh, you know, there's, there's a lot of things I'm sure people still have questions on, but I just want to encourage people to reach out to some of us if they need some clarity on some things and, and ask things they don't know. Um, and just like we're coming to you and asking you guys to kind of do something that hasn't been done before. Um, we're gracious on our side, but we'd like to be open books to you guys as well.
Thank you for your comments and your participation in the whole process.
No, thank you guys very much. I know it's been a lot of work from all you, so we really appreciate it.
And I, I have to take the moment, as you mentioned of big children, I really just have to say that there is a little child in this audience who's been in this meeting, I don't know if the cameras can show, but, little Phil, you have been like golden this entire meeting. I am incredibly impressed. If my kid was here, it would not be the same thing. And I'm really excited to have a young audience member participate in our council meeting today. You're awesome. So shout out to you.
He was threatened, uh, before the meeting, just so you know.
I've been stealing his cookies the whole time I've been here, so I don't know.
Needed some snacks.
Well, thank you guys very much. I really appreciate it from everybody.
Commander Bell?
It's working. How about now?
There you go.
There we go. Um, thank you for allowing me to talk to you guys and, at least from the police department's perspective. I can tell you that the, uh, proposed ordinance is something that we've talked about, um, at our level, and we, um, we agree with the recommendations in the ordinance. I can tell you that, uh, um, if it wasn't for this ordinance and, and the, the vehicles that we're talking about, um, that are being allowed to be on the street, they're not allowed to be on the street. And that's, that's the important part that I need people to hear. While vehicles are being driven on the roadways, um, there's also people stealing out of Walmart. That doesn't mean that we're allowing that to happen. Um, those things do happen from time to time, and we do take enforcement action when we deem it appropriate and necessary for the safety of the community. So with the, the proposals that are made in this ordinance, we believe that it does cover the safety factors that are involved with U T V operation on the street and on the roadways, and, uh, that's about it.
Thank you for being here and representing the law enforcement. Councilmember Dennehy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, looking at, um, at this proposal on this, one thing was left out on this, and that is a, uh, for noise regulations. Um, I, I know that most of the people want to keep their mufflers and that in a, in a very, you know, but they, they, I've written for a long time, I know what to do to make a, a vehicle loud, and I think that's one thing that was left out that we need to make sure that the stock muffler, that, you know, that is, is still on here.
I, I thought that we had waived the noise ord, or the noise portion. Um, if you look at page two, um, letter I, we left the noise off because we did put hours between 6:00 to 10:00 P. M. on it. Am I correct in that, Ryan?
I, I think, I, I think there was a lot of discussion around that, but I, I think ultimately we did miss that in the ordinance, um, because I, I believe what we heard from the U T V community is that, uh, these do come stock with mufflers. Is that correct, sir? Yep. Um, and because they, you know, then, especially the newer ones, they do come stock, that we were going to, uh, include, uh, mufflers, uh, under safety and equipment, and I think we can add that back in, right, Corey?
We certainly can.
Yeah, and, and I just think it's, you know, I, I'm all in favor of the whole U T V thing. I am 100% in favor of this. But, you know, we also got to just watch out for the rest of the citizens with the noise factor, and, and, and like I said, we all know. We all had motorcycles and stuff growing up. We all did what we could do to make them louder, and, and, you know, but, you know, this is still within city neighborhoods and that, and let's still be respectful to all our neighbors.
So if council is inclined to add mufflers, I would recommend having a new subsection H saying functioning mufflers, and then re-lettering from there. Um, I think it fits best there, because again, it's stock equipment, and then lamps would be I.
So it'd be item H to have a functioning muffler?
Yes, lamps would then be I, and all other safety, equipment J, and the time limitation is K.
Well, there is two Hs.
Yeah, there is, so. But I think in terms of where it should fit, um, it should be before lamps.
Okay.
Um, just because it is a stock item.
Okay. Councilmember Schmisher?
Just a question on that. Is a functioning muffler sufficient? Or are we also asking that they not modify the muffler to enhance the drag sound?
Well, I, I, I think you can get a, you can get modified mufflers. There's no doubt on that.
You can get modified mufflers on a Harley, on a Jeep Cherokee.
But, but I think we have to say within a reasonable of the stock muffler's noise, the, uh, I, you know, that's a tough one. That's a tough one to call, because I know just performance-wise, you know, most people, when they buy vehicles like this or other vehicles, that's one of the first things you change is, is your muffler system. But I think you can do that and still keep a, a lower noise level on that.
So I'm just wondering, is there a different, um, adjective that we should be using rather than functioning to ensure that we're covering the intended purpose of the new H?
Well, you would have to say a functioning, non-modified muffler. Um, because you could have a, a stock muffler that was still modified. Um, so I wouldn't want to use stock either, so I'd say functioning, non-modified.
Tim McCain, if you'd like to make a quick comment?
Yeah, just to add, um, Forest Service and B L M recommend 96 decibels for, uh, noise. And, and stock machines, uh, do have a, a required Forest Service-approved spark arrestor on them to keep from starting fires. So not saying that somebody would modify a stock muffler, uh, make it louder and, and bypass a spark arrestor, but, uh, but that's what, uh, I mean, new machines are sold, they're, you know, they have to comply with those guidelines to have a, a spark arrestor, a Forest Service-approved spark arrestor and, and 96 decibels out on, on the trail. So that might be something to look at.
And, and the city doesn't unfortunately have a decimeter, so frankly, having the decibel limitation, I, I, I understand it's, it's a, a good line in the sand, but we don't have any way to measure it. Uh, so I would, I would stick with the functioning, non-modified.
What about the spark arrestor?
It's pretty standard.
Can we, can we say a muffler in compliance with Forest Service regulations? Since, since we're using CPW permitting guidelines?
Okay. A muffler that is in compliance with, is it Forest Service or State Division of Parks and Wildlife?
It's CPW.
CPW?
Okay. With CPW requirements.
Okay.
Compliance or requirements?
I would say in compliance.
In compliance?
So we have three amendments on the table that, well, they're not on the table, but they're suggested to be on the table when a motion is made, and that is on section 1010, 010, A, to say that the utility terrain vehicles shall have the same meaning given in C R S as off-highway vehicles. Then B, to add at the end of this sentence, unless otherwise posted. And then have item H to have a functioning muffler in compliance with CPW requirements, which would be placed before item I of lamps. If there's no further discussion, I would like to entertain a motion. Councilmember Smith?
Do I have to name all those in this ordinance, or can I say as discussed?
I think you can say as indicated.
All right. Madam, Madam Mayor and Council, I move to approve ordinance four, series of 2022, with the opposed amendments.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion?
With, with the discussed amendment, sorry.
And just, just to make sure that our city clerk is, is good with, that she feels she's captured. Thank you.
Councilmember Schmisher?
I think that this is discussion on this motion, but correct me if it's not. Could we, I mean, I know that we want to dip our toe in the water with this, but I think we've also heard from citizens that they're interested in A T Vs. So could we maybe also think about a timeline down the road, whether it's nine months from now or a year from now, where we evaluate how this is going and see if it's time to expand it?
I think that's the plan.
Okay, awesome.
Because it could be to expand or minimize.
Or minimize.
Depends on how things go, right?
I, I would suggest that, that we need at least a year to evaluate.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Any further discussion? I'll call a vote. Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Aye.
Councilmember Bee Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Stein?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracy?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Aye.
Thank you, Council. Thank you to the U T V committee and to Brandon and Mandy, we worked on this as well as our staff. And now this meeting is adjourned.